Could we all stand for the pledge of allegiance tonight? We're going to have Mr. Polk, Councilman Polk, please, to pledge tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our invocation tonight is going to be Chuck Mock. Could you come up here Chuck?
Yes.
Thank you. And you're from the Jarre Community Church?
Yes, Jarre Community Church. Can I get you to bow your heads with me? Dear God, we thank you for the people that you have assembled in this room, the leaders that you have chosen that are able to make decisions that impact our city and the residents of this community. God, I ask that you guide them and you give them wisdom to make the right choices, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Could we all have a moment of silence for Police Officer Jack Craig? He passed away a couple of weeks ago. He's a 22-year police officer and he was retired and he was a bailiff for the city court. And he was retired from the city court, then that's when he had his illness. We'll have a moment of silence for Jack. Thank you. Can we remain standing for the 6,000 people that lost their lives at 911? Thank you. Tonight, we have our citizen recognition by Councilman Julius Anderson.
Well, good evening, everyone. Every now and then, you get an opportunity to see there are some people really just don't want to be out in front, and yet, those people are doing some of the greatest things in our community. And I'd like to recognize one. And sometimes, you've kind of got to pull them up, but yet, just want to let you know that there are some great people out in our community, and I'd like to recognize one of them. The September Citizenship Award for District 6 goes to Ms. O.T. Foster Steele, an ordinary person doing ordinary things in her community. But hey, look, here's just a snapshot of this lady and that of her life. Born and raised in the Whitley community, Ms. Steele is one of the most respectable persons in our community. A quiet person that does not seek attention, who'd rather be a follower than a leader, but yet, she's a leader. Attended the Westlong Fallow Elementary School, the McKinley Junior High School, and the Muncie Central High School. As a young teenager, she aspired to be an educator and give, and she aspired to be an educator, and she gave her life. After high school, her aspirations were put on the back burner. She knew that her parents could not afford for her to attend or to go to college. Soon after, she married Sam Steele, and they started their family, which produced three childrens. Waking up one morning, as a stay-at-home mom, she thought to herself, "All I have is a college, a high school education." Without telling her husband, she applied for a job as a nurse's aide and was, and followed, oh, come on Julius, and without telling her husband, she applied for a job as a nurse's aide and was allowed to start just two days later. She then applied for LPN school and was accepted, but she never gave up her dream. Working days and attending night classes, she balanced her family, working, work and schools, and her community. And at the young age of 60, she graduated from Ball State University with a bachelor's degree in early childhood development. Her dream was finally came true. She retired after 28 years of service from Ball Memorial Hospital, three years in nursing as LPN, and 25 years as a respiratory therapist. She also became a substitute teacher. Her life was filled with love and commitment for all the residents where she lived at the Whitley community. Whitley Community Council newsletter spotlighted Mrs. Steele, and they asked her some questions. And when asked, her answer was, the question they asked is that, "What made you become involved in the Whitley Community Council?" Her answer, she loved her community and everyone in it. She wanted everyone to be involved. Ms. Steele can be best described as a person of compassion and patience, so that's why today, I am pleased to announce the recipient of the Citizenship Award for the month of September, Ms. O.T. Steele's. And on behalf of all the councilmen from various districts and those that are large, the Muncie City Council, September the 12th, City of Muncie Citizenship Award presented to O.T. Steele, thank you for your generous commitment and of time and support, and your inspiration to the Muncie community.
Thank you. I don't have a speech, I don't have anything written out, but I just want to say, you always have to be careful because you don't know who's watching you, and you don't know who's coming along behind you in your footsteps.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's just give her another round of applause. I would like to now bring up Ms. Yvonne Doyle Thompson, yeah, okay, yeah, Director of Human Rights, okay, Commission, come on up.
Okay, I'd like to introduce our newly appointed board member to the Muncie Human Rights Commission, Mr. Carlos Taylor. Carlos has served on the Muncie Human Rights Commission, this is his second term, and I'd like to have him come up and just say a few words about his service to our community.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me? Okay. Well, it's a pleasure to be appointed to the Human Rights Commission. This will be my second term. I was just telling Yvonne Doyle, or Thompson, I did it too, that the first term went so fast, I don't know where the time goes, but it's a pleasure, it's a privilege and an honor to serve the community by serving on the Human Rights Commission to help ensure equal access to all citizens of Muncie. So, thank you again for your appointment.
Next month, on the Citizens Recognition, will be Linda Gregory. She'll have that choice to make her pick on the Citizens Recognition. And moving on, real call, please.
Barton.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Quirk.
Here.
Gregory.
Present.
Polk.
Present.
Anderson.
Present.
Powell. Canaster.
Here.
Dishman.
Here.
He here.
There you go. We need approval of our last month's meeting. We have an approval of it.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the minutes from August 6th meeting.
Second.
Been a motion to approve the minutes from our August meeting and second by Doug Marshall. Real call, please.
McPolk.
Yes.
Gregory.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Quirk.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Dishman.
Yes.
Canaster.
Yes.
A yes.
Do we have any committee reports tonight? No committee reports tonight, we'll just move on to our previous introduced ordinances. Ordinance 24-12.
Ordinance 24-12 and ordinance, amending ordinance 32-07, 30-08, 47-09, 30-10, 32-11, the maximum salaries of each and every member of the Muncie Fire Department of the City of Muncie, Indiana for the year 2012. Mr. President, I move that we adopt ordinance 24-12.
Second.
There's been a motion to adopt in second. Is there any questions from the audience tonight, or anybody on this ordinance?
Good evening, Audrey Jones, City Controller. The only thing I wanted to say is, the amendment that was made for the, to make it retroactive to January 1st, 2008.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 24-12, Section 2, be amended to, that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, effective January 1st, 2008, after approval of the Mayor of the City of Muncie, Indiana, and any publication if required by law.
Second.
We have a motion to amend ordinance 24-12 in a second. Real call, please.
Polk.
Yes.
Powell. Quirk.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Canaster.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
Gregory.
Yes.
Dishman.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
A yes.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of ordinance 24-12 as amended.
Second.
And a motion to adopt as amended and seconded by Councilman Quirk. Real call, please.
Is there any discussion?
Oh, sorry, is there any discussion from the audience tonight? Is there any from the council members tonight? Real call, please.
Dishman.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Canaster.
Yes.
Polk.
Yes.
Gregory.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
Quirk.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
A yes.
Ordinance 25-12.
Ordinance 25-12 and ordinance, amending ordinance 31-07, 31-08, 48-09, 31-10, 33-11, the maximum salaries of each and every member of the Muncie Police Department of the City of Muncie, Indiana for the year 2012. Mr. President, I move that we adopt ordinance 25-12.
Second.
There's been a motion to adopt in a second by Councilman Marshall. Do we have any questions from the audience? State your name.
Audrey Jones, City Controller. I just want to reiterate on this one as well, it needs to be January 1st, 2008.
We have any discussion from the council? Do we have anybody to amend?
Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to amend ordinance 25-12, Section 2, to read that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, effective January 1st, 2008, after the approval of the Mayor of the City of Muncie, Indiana, and any publication if required by law.
Second.
Been a motion to amend 25-12 in second by Councilman Marshall. Do we have any comments tonight from the audience? Oh, we got to do a real call in a minute. Real call, please.
Dishman.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Canaster.
Yes.
Polk.
Yes.
Gregory.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
Quirk.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
A yes.
Now, do we have any discussion tonight?
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of ordinance 25-12 as amended.
Second.
Okay. There's been a motion to amend ordinance 25-12 and seconded by Ms. Quirk. Real call, please.
Quirk.
Yes.
Dishman.
Yes.
Polk.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
Canaster.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Gregory.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
A yes.
Thank you.
Mr. President, at this time, I would like to ask that Resolution 20-12 be put back on the table, been taken off the table, so we need to put it back on.
Second.
Been a motion to bring ordinance 20-12 off the table and seconded by Mr. Polk, Councilman Polk.
Council Bruce Baldwin, with the Muncie Redevelopment Commission, 2008 North Forest.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Real call, please.
Powell. Quirk.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Dishman.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Polk.
Yes.
Gregory.
Yes.
Canaster.
Yes.
A yes.
All right. Bruce Baldwin, 2008 North Forest. This was tabled last month at the request of the applicant. They are here this evening, and they would like to have it brought off the table. It's the project that regards the Hotel Roberts, and it's a senior citizens housing complex, and I'll let them answer questions.
Good evening, Council. Pete Schwegerott, with Miller Valentine Group, 8915 Hialeah Drive in West Chester, Ohio. We thank you for your time and considerations tonight. We're happy to be in front of you with the development. This all started more than a year ago, when we recognized a need for senior housing in your community. We came in and met with various administration departments, your community development department, economic development team, to try and identify where the most appropriate and optimal location for senior housing could be in your community, and we recognized that with the services and amenities that downtown offered, we wanted to focus our efforts on the central city and trying to bring people back downtown that can then utilize businesses and patronize businesses in your community. With the Roberts Hotel being vacant at the time, and having gone through the foreclosure process, it certainly offered up a great opportunity to not only provide a needed senior housing in your community, but also to preserve a historic landmark in your community. And working together with the city administration, community development department, the economic development team in the county, we made an application in the fall for housing tax credits through the state of Indiana. We received those funds and, we were awarded those funds in March, and we've been proceeding for it ever since. The development will include an 83-unit senior housing facility that will be in the upper floors 2 through 7 of the building. And then, on the first floor, we're going to preserve the first four spaces for commercial spaces, retail, and other businesses, hoping to maybe attract a restaurant or a coffee shop and other retail spaces. So, it will be a true mixed-use building. However, right now, we are using the financing to fund the senior housing component, and we are marketing and making those B-spaces available for, through your economic development team, and to make sure that we can fill those spaces as well. Part of our desires here is, it's a complicated process. We're not only using the housing tax credits, we're utilizing historic tax credits, potentially this abatement here, county edit dollars, home dollars from the city, as well as potentially federal home loan bank dollars. So, it is a complicated process, and the building like this is much more expensive to renovate than it would be to build a new building. And so, it's going to be very helpful for our operations, especially in those years when we're leasing up units. If you can assist us with this abatement, it will allow us to preserve some dollars for marketing and lease up, and really hit the ground running when we start construction with a full-force marketing effort, identify the seniors in your community that have a need, and assist them in finding a quality housing option. It's going to be a green building design. All units are going to include energy efficient, Energy Star certifications, it's 100% accessible. It includes a comprehensive list of, host of what's called universal design features, which makes accessibility for all mobility levels achievable. We're going to have a theater room, a fitness center, a banquet facility, a business center. The whole building will be wireless, there'll be a full-time onsite manager, onsite maintenance person, as well as supportive services, curb-to-curb transportation, utilizing some of your local service agencies, meals programs, lighthouse keeping. So, we think it's going to be a great benefit, not only from an economic development standpoint, but from the community development standpoint, providing a needed resource to your seniors. It's a growing demographic anywhere, and the greatest day of the process for me is when we have a grand opening, and we see 83 residents in there, enjoying and benefiting from what we can do. So, we would greatly appreciate your considerations here, and certainly happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody from the council? Ms. Quirk.
The first one, can you give us, I know that you probably don't have hard dates, but a sample of your timeline?
Yeah, we hope to start construction likely in October. It's very feasible that that could take a month or two to finance, the banking side of things is the driving force there, and sometimes, they're a little slower in their processes. But optimally, October, probably the worst case before the end of the year. It's going to be all of a 12-month renovation process, so we would hope to deliver our first units in the late fall of '13, hopefully, early fall, but that really just depends.
And then, my other question is, do, what experience do you have with other senior projects that you've done in other communities? And like, did you have trouble getting the commercial people to come to you, or how did that work?
No. Just to give you a little background on Miller Valentine, we've been in existence for 60 years. We're a full-service developer out of Cincinnati. We actually own and developed a facility here in Muncie about a decade ago called Mill Pond. It's a market-rate apartment community up on your northwestern area. As a company, we've been in existence for 60 years in the commercial world, do retail, high-end office space, and then residentially, we've been developing housing for 20 years. We've developed, owned, and managed, at this point, about 10,500 units in our portfolio. We're in about 17 states, mostly Ohio and Indiana. In the past three years, we've done six of these developments throughout Indiana. We could get the finished product of a new construction building in Lawrence. We're building right now in Columbus, Indiana, and Bloomington, Indiana. We were funded this year for Muncie and Kokomo. Our very first asset we built was in Lawrenceburg 17 years ago in the housing world, and we still own that property.
A couple other things that I want to add. I'm a member of the Historic Preservation Commission.
Yes, I remember you from the, yes.
So, just wanted to say, thank you for taking this building on. We're just glad that someone is willing to take on this project. We know it is a project, but I believe that that building is an asset to our community, and I thank you for taking it on. Also, on the Edit Building Corporation, which oversees the convention center, and so, we are very glad to have someone occupying that space as well. But one last thing, that the Historic Preservation Commission, just this past May, we did a presentation, a gentleman, he's in architecture from Kendallville, outside of Fort Wayne, and he talked about making your communities walkable, especially for seniors. And I think that there's really an opportunity here for Miller Valentine to work with the chamber and get some of our local businesses to step up and say, what are the services that we have available for seniors? Because a lot of people are wanting to have walkability so that they can get supplies that they may need, or have a restaurant, so. If that's, if there's anything that I can do to help with that, Bruce, just let me know. And thank you.
That's great. I have a couple of questions. One, what size units are these? One, two, three bedrooms?
It's a mix of ones and twos. The one-bedrooms, they probably average about 750 square feet. The good thing about working in a box is, you have to fit a certain amount of units in, and when you're not building them perfectly, there's always some excess when you're working within the box. So, the one-bedrooms range from as small as 675, but most of them are in the 700s, and they get as big as 800 square feet. The two-bedrooms, the smallest ones are 875, and they're mostly nine to 10, to about 1050 in square footage.
Okay, what are the projected rentals, or do you know at this point?
Well, really, the development is going to be targeting 55-plus and 60% adjusted median income and under. That's based on your county AMIs. So, that's going to equate to roughly, this isn't an exact number, 29 or so thousand dollars. So, those are the income criteria. So, depending on how much you make would depend your rent. The max rents that I think we're performing is for a two-bedroom, somewhere in a 650-range for some of the biggest ones. And so, that's going to be, water included, the only thing you're going to be responsible for is electric there.
And then, my other question is, how many home dollars are going into this?
I think the, it's a total of 400, 200 from one year's allocation and 200 from next year's allocation.
Mr. Marshall.
Does your company have a website where some of the locals could go to, to see some of the projects you've done in the past?
Yes, MVG.com.
Say again?
MVG, as in Miller Valentine Group dot com. And then, there's a link to our residential site, I think it says Apartment Living, and it takes you to YourNextPlaceToLive.com, which is our residential website. There, you can see our entire portfolio, what's coming. The Loft at Roberts is already identified on there, is coming soon. Hopefully, within a week, you'll see those beautiful billboards in front of the site, get a breath of fresh air as we start to ramp into some of the marketing. We do already have some signage over there, but might as well take advantage of what right now is a little bit of an eyesore. So, we are going to get some signage up there, and they really don't aggressively start that marketing push until we start construction, because that's going to give us about a year to get the word out to folks. One other thing I did want to point out is, we will be going out to bid on the construction work in about two weeks. We've already told the Mayor and the County Commissioners that we will be doing a public notification and inviting all the local subcontractors to come bid the work. We certainly like to offer that opportunity for local labor to get involved.
Anybody else from the council?
I too would like to thank you, because I'm like, I agree with Allison, it is, it's a beautiful building, and you know, just to make it something into what you're making it into will be wonderful.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
On your application, you have other benefits, is, one of them is removal of a vacant or blighted building. Are you, what building are you removing?
No, we're not removing, but I think that's just meaning the vacant building being brought back into service.
Okay, I just want to clarify that for everybody. And then, how long of abatement are you looking at?
Bruce, can you help me with that? It's a two-year.
It says 10 years on here.
Well, there's two, I think, type. And there's a graduated schedule to that, or is that?
Anyone else? I also got a favorable recommendation for the Tax Abatement Committee. Is anybody from the audience wishing to speak?
Yvonne Thompson, Muncie Human Rights Commission, 300 North High Street. I'm also interested in the company looking at working with MBEs and DBEs here in our community, and also looking at hiring people from our community. Hopefully, that's a possibility also with your company. Is that going to be happening?
Yes, we certainly already have local employees at our Mill Pond. We will be hiring new employees for this, and certainly, all are welcome. We will be hiring new employees for this, and certainly all are welcome to be, to apply for that job, and certainly qualified candidates, and there's no reason why we wouldn't desire that to be a local employee, but certainly those local, those local applications have to come in as well. And then from MBE, WBE perspective, certainly if the city has a list or if the local trades organizations have a list of identified MBEs and WBEs, we are happy to have them participate on the bid process. We did commit, as you make these applications to the state, you score points. We were one of 14 funded, 17 were, I'm sorry, 7D were submitted. We did check a box that said that we're going to commit to, I can't quote the percentage right now, but there was a percentage of MBE, WBE participation that we've committed to as part of the project.
Anybody else wishing to speak?
Question.
Has someone made a motion to adopt it?
Yes.
No. Just a motion to bring it off the table.
We, far off the table, yeah, we got to make the motion down.
Do we have a motion to adopt?
Mr. President, this time I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution 20-12.
Second.
And a motion to adopt 20-12 and seconded by Councilman Marshall. Roll call, please.
Canaster?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Dishman?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Gregory?
Yes.
Quirk?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Ayes.
New ordinances. Ordinance 39-12.
Ordinance 39-12, an ordinance to amend the City of Muncie Comprehensive zoning ordinance from the R4 residence zone to the BV Variety Business Zone on premises located at 109 and 113 West Ninth Street and adjacent to 1619 South Walnut Street, Muncie, Indiana. Mr. President, I make the motion to introduce ordinance 39-12.
Second.
There's been a motion to adopt 39-12 and seconded by Councilman Marshall. Is there anybody from the audience or anybody from this project wishing to speak tonight?
Good evening. I'm Tom Porter, 1619 Tanglewood Drive, Lafayette, Indiana. I'm representing Kirby Risk Electrical Supply. We're wanting to rearrange our dock entrance to our building at 1619 South Walnut, and when we went to the city to talk about doing this, we found out that from an old history that a couple lots were still zoned R4. So we aren't able to do this unless we get it to zone business, and plus we're infringing kind of on the neighbors across on High Street at our dock, and we want to clean that up and be a good neighbor to those people on the High Street.
Have you got with all the neighbors?
We have sent out notices of just our rezoning process. We haven't talked about what we're going to do as far as, but we would not infringe on there. It would encompass, we would encompass the whole block at that point, so we would stay on our property with what we're doing.
Is this just a matter of cleanup from a, something way back years ago?
Way back years ago.
Okay, we just had one a little while back.
Yeah. And we'll be back, I'll probably be back in the near future with just one more lot on the same property, so.
But you're the owner of this property?
I am a representative.
Oh, okay.
I'm an agent for the company. I'm retired from the company, so I'm a consultant for them, and I've got a letter of representation.
Have any questions from the council?
It's my understanding that you don't own two of the properties yet. Is that correct?
There's just one property we don't own.
One that you don't?
Right. There's a house there that's abandoned, 109 West Ninth Street.
I see, okay, I'm with you.
And that goes up for sale, tax sale, Wednesday. And we're, so we're hoping to be successful in that and that will, and clean up that property also.
You already own the two vacant, or the company owns the two vacant lots?
Yes, we do.
Anybody else from the council?
I have another question.
Okay.
What's your timeline on redoing this dock business?
Just when we get the approval to go ahead, basically. So I imagine because of weather and for what we will have to do, it would not get, the reconstruction would not get done until probably next spring because we go through this process.
Anybody else wishing to speak on the council? Anybody from the audience wishing to speak?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one question. Harvey Wright, Park Superintendent. We recently have been out cleaning, and that is one of the areas that we cleaned, and where your present dock comes out onto the street. And if you notice, when we took down the trees there, there's no sidewalk there anymore through the years of backing in through there. It's taken out. Do you plan on replacing that sidewalk?
We had tried to get ahold of somebody from the city past years that could never get anybody to come out.
You got one now? But that's why I was wondering, because like I said, we kept that back and just through the years of semis backing into your current dock, you know, it took the sidewalk out, and we definitely interested in having you replace that. Okay. That's all I have.
Anybody else from the audience? Do we have a motion?
Got some questions.
Just for introduction.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Now we're going into public comments. Do you have any that have signed up on the? Motion to adjourn. Mr. Anderson's got some announcements to make.
Okay. I would like to announce that on that of the 20th, which is Thursday, the Beauty Center is having their dinner. I'd like to invite individuals or yourselves out to the dinner. If you'd like to get a ticket, you can call the Beauty Center, or you can just see me right afterwards for our dinner. Okay? That's the 20th.
Last month, I asked Mr. Wright if he would take care of the poison ivy vines in the trees that he can park near the Walk of Fame, and within a week or so after that, he had crews out there pulling all those dead vines, all those vines out, and it looks very good, and I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Arvin.
I told him, I'd tell him publicly that they did a good job.
Ms. Quirk?
Being the council representative on the Historic Preservation Commission, I'd like to take an opportunity to invite everyone to come out and join the Washington Street Festival this weekend. We also have, there's a new festival that's going to start this year. It's the Midwest Restoration Festival, and there's a showhouse on Adams Street that if you have a chance to go through, you should take a walk through and look at all the hard work that went into restoring one of our beautiful historic homes on Adams. So I hope that people take a chance to go out this weekend.
Saturday and Sunday, right?
Saturday and Sunday.
Anybody have anything else? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you for coming out.